Welcome everybody to the 57th Town Hall Meeting. It's July 18th, 2023. And today, we are hosted, joined by 17 people being Kran, Felix, Fly, Vanessa, Debbie, Esther, Lai, which looks like Haddaf, Ian, Kendrick, Malik, Michael, Kazim, Slid, Stephen, Tavvo, and the Fries Defy. Thanks a lot for joining everybody. It's a good group. On today's agenda, there's one unusual item being a spotlight for the Rejuve Catalyst Fun 10 proposal. And it should take about 10 minutes-ish. We can go a bit longer if needed, and I figured to put that first in the agenda before the usual workgroups. So just a quick reminder on the ambassador program and what we do. Probably speaking, we're a bunch of enthusiasts who want to help spread the word on SingularityNet, and we do this in self-organizing workgroups. There's all a bunch of different topics where if you want to help out, you can. And yeah, you do get to meet some nice people and hang out together. We do this on Discord, so if you want to join in, please hop onto our Discord server. And with that out of the way, well, we get to the Rejuve Spotlight. I put the link in here. Let me also copy that and put it in chat. There you go. Well, who can I give the word on this? I see Debbie and Michael in the room. I see Kazim. Any takers?
I think Debbie would probably be the best person to start going through it as she's uploaded the initial proposal. Otherwise, I'm happy to go ahead. I thought Jasmine would be here too. She would have been the best person, but otherwise I'm happy to stand in.
Sure thing. I can't quite make her appear.
Okay, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All good.
We just uploaded our proposal for a social value token model that can be used by any Web3 project. We will be using it for our data and product NFTs. And the social value there is the alignment of or the ability to equally distribute money in accordance to the proportion that someone has contributed to a product. Besides that, many social values can be encoded in these tokens. Another one that we'll be using is the value of scientific integrity, that the data has integrity, as long as you can measure it, you can encode that value. And finally, that there's a proportionate distribution of every ethnicity in the data itself. And by these measurements, what we can do is, you know, pay more for some of the ethnic groups that aren't represented. And we could also do things like monitor if the clinical trial is using scientific standards. And these together, these different social values, they can be tested out using a simulation to see if the tokenomics truly incentivizes the thing that it says it will before it goes live. And we also offer a business model so that once we've measured or we have the ability to measure in blockchain with our AIs, how much your tokenomics has met a standard for a value. We can do things like give it a score so that you show advertisers for products as a consumer that you desire based on your moral preferences. And so that's what this proposal is about. And it will help us to make our data and product NFTs as well as be general for everybody who wants to have a social value token. Kazim, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just to make it clear, the proposal is for development funding. We're looking for around 75,000 ADA to start developing this data NFT. So it revolves around an NFT on the Cardano blockchain, which ultimately it helps to kind of give people sovereignty back over their data. But not only that, it extends the ownership to fractional ownership of intellectual property further on down the line once therapeutic products have been developed from that data. So a lot of benefits from the users and for the people who contribute data and AI models. I suppose in our quick time we have with you guys, what would be really useful for us is one, just to be clear, that if you are in the Cardano ecosystem yourself and you're familiar with the voting process, please look up our proposal and please vote for us. This is the second time, I think, Rejuve is applying for catalyst funding. Last time, we didn't get that. So any advice or tips you could give us that would help us to kind of increase our marketing efforts and exposure in the Cardano community over the next month or so? That would be very appreciated.
This fractional ownership can also be used, like say, you know, there's an actor struggling in LA and they're worried about AI and they're worried about that somebody's just going to take one shot of their speech and and image and then use that forever and that they only have to pay them for half a day. Well, the same thing is, same principle, you know, of a company taking your DNA, using it forever and using it for profits. This is made to prevent all of that by keeping track of your proportionate contribution and owning your data.
Good stuff.
I liked the third point under the impact about Blue paying for decentralized identity solutions. Because this has been like a challenge for us ambassadors to even use that. Because there are tokens, there are social tokens, but we are not really using that actively. But we are collecting that towards and like having that intention of this means something. And we'd be interested to see other researchers that could give some easier use cases to put them in use and connect it with decentralized identity. I would say one unfortunate thing is that to learn about the proposal after finalizing stage, because we had in ambassador program several times discussions of what proposals could be supporter to ourselves and would have loved to know this initiative beforehand. But something for next time?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. We just really decided to do it at the last minute.
But obviously, the idea for the data NFT that's been around from the very beginning is in the white paper. I think partly has been implemented or developed for other chains like Ethereum. But this is kind of the development side on Cardano. And it does open up some interesting avenues in that, you know, the patient's data remains the patient. They get compensated if they contribute that data back into the data economy. They get the IP representation as well. If that patient wanted to sell that IP representation to an investor, for example, it's a way for investors to also enter into, you know, the pharmaceutical therapeutics IP market. And it's quite a novel and unique way to do that. So I do believe there's, you know, a lot of unique things with this. I just wanted to share that as well.
Good stuff.
One recommendation for next round actually is Catalyst, what works usually quite well? You submit your proposal to F and very early stage, once the proposal submission is already open. And you get comments from the community directly in Catalyst and questions with which you can further improve your proposal. And then next month to come, I think it's August when the voting starts then, I would definitely recommend that you really push as much as possible on social media from your site already with Mindlet and really create a constant awareness. Because in Fun10, there's a massive competition with a bunch of very large projects. And you should definitely, whatever you can, to reach out to voters in this regard. Also, just have yourself somehow a plan or strategy just for this next month, how you want to create awareness about the proposal. That's actually quite important. Beautiful proposal. Well done. Definitely is my vote.
From our side, we keep you in touch with all the events that would be necessary for having a connection with viewers and the voters.
Related to that, and also welcome Jasmine. But it makes me wonder, will there be an idea fest from Swarm side for this fund?
We don't know yet, but European, Latam, and Eastern Town Halls running their idea fest.
Awesome. And also noting quite some solid comments from Kran in chat. I hope you're reading there.
Have you guys like went over it already or?
Yeah, kind of.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know that we were starting and I was like, sort of another call was dragging on. And I figured maybe you guys would have started with something else, but sorry.
Yeah, apologies for that. At the same time, Debbie and Kazim did cover it proper, so no worries there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to ask like if you have anything to add, but that's a bit tricky without having heard.
I just wanted to say thanks, Kran, for their suggestions. They sound really good. I don't know if you could like help us to actually set some of these spaces up. I think I can speak with the team when I say, I think we'd love to get involved in some of those names in pushing our project out.
Yeah, nice. Seems like Big Pay has a pretty good connection to Snet. And then I know Think Grow Crypto and Mauin. I could reach out to them and then get back to you on that.
Yeah, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you, Kran.
But yeah, I think it'd be good to get any Snet ecosystem project in Fun10. And then maybe just, yeah, hive mind a space together. That way you all pull from people that are interested in all the projects. You get some more exposure that way and then also knock out the space for everybody would probably be a really good way to move forward with that.
So I'm aware NuNet is applying.
Are there any others besides NuNet and Rejuve that you know about, Peter?
No, I do not. I think that's it.
Yeah, I just posted the NuNet proposal onto the chat. If anybody wants to take a look.
Yeah, thanks a lot for that. And that one is also potentially, well, there's a clear connection to Rejuve there, I would say.
So they have like six of them, but one of them is related to such a matter of us.
We're planning on emphasizing more, more of the AI analytics tools. And I think there's for, I think that the bioinformatic space is a good arena for pushing use of Singularity in general, because there's so many algorithms that are being tried and so many, and so much data that's publicly available that if that could all be, you know, if there was, you know, data sources that were available in the Snet and easy ways for people to get their algorithms on there, then there's like, I think there's a huge potential for driving use. So I just wanted to bring that, put that on you guys' radars. My name is Mike Duncan, by the way. I'm the Chief Science Officer of Rejuve Biotech. And I'm the Director of Clinical Trials for Rejuve AI, although that hasn't been, there hasn't been any work done in there since Rejuve AI is focused on getting the app out. But I'm certainly available if anyone wants to discuss any of this kind of stuff further. I'm on the Discord, although I haven't been on, I haven't, I usually don't pay attention to that much, but I get emails if I'm tagged on there, so feel free to try to contact me there.
Awesome. And to simplify that a little bit, would you happen to know your Discord username? Because otherwise it's a bit of a guess.
Oh, right, right. Let me see. I think it's MJSDuncan.
Perfect.
So are a lot of you here, community reviewers, are kind of have insights into, you know, like how the commentary works or how to kind of, yeah, get the, I guess, communicate the idea on a more integrated or personal way or anything of that nature, like if anyone has insights into that?
Review usually happens through, let's say, previously called first commentary advisors, then assessors, now reviewers. Proposals are assessed by mainly three criterias: the impact, the feasibility, and auditability of the proposal. And they give a rating of five stars to each of them with a rationale. And this will determine the star ranking of your proposal, which then also will be displayed in the voting. Can vary from one star to five stars. One problem often proposals is that you actually need domain experts to assess specific proposals. In your regard, for example, it would be quite important to have some reviewers there who actually know about AI in this regard, right? So I think this is something what you can do already to also emphasize this and say, hey, other people already who signed up as reviewer, review signup is already over, so you can't log in anymore for Fun10. But already you reach out and emphasize already, hey, if you have some background in AI and you're an assessor, please give a eye on our proposal. We really need expert views on this. Because the random assessor might not be able to properly assess your proposal. So make sure to stress it out, yes. And another part as well is you have, in this round as well, you have community moderators, which are set by the Cardano ambassadors. Which moderate actually like conversations and stuff and whatnot around the proposals. So maybe this is also something what actually maybe Singularity ambassador could do. Getting in touch with them and say, hey, can we get some help on Singularity net proposals?
Like moderators on the Catalyst platform or somewhere else?
That's not fully defined yet. It's a new test in Fun10, which wasn't piloted before, so we'll have to see.
Drop the link about the review process. And right now it's unclear how, like intimate, you know, like how much you said, personalities to you, your team and the person who is reviewing. And what previously community has been doing is participating in open calls in Twitter spaces or in town halls of the Catalyst or the community town halls and using these spaces to talk about, hey, we have this idea. And I'm quite sure that on coming months, there will be more focus on, hey, what proposals we look at. But it does require a bit of like attention to seek out these agenda items. But from our side, we are somewhat connected in Discord channel. And if somebody posts something as a theme, I make sure it reaches the Discord channel in Singularity Discord channel. And if it reaches there, perhaps you can kind of proliferate it to Telegram and elsewhere. Or another option is you create the space yourself and tell, hey, we are here to talk about Singularity net proposals. What are your proposals you want to share? And then you just find the date and time and people join and have this collective discussion.
Yeah, I think, I think I've noticed the NuNet, you already tweeted a Twitter thread of the proposal. That is a very good thing to do. I think Danny and other members of the catalyst are encouraging proposals to do Twitter threads of their ideas. It's going to be a lot of, in the voting period, it's about keeping the proposal in the eye of the voter and to try and summarize what your proposal do. So maybe if you do a little presentation and tweet that around the time of voting as well, which I think a few people will do, but a lot of people are going to be competing for attention. So it's going to be really about communication.
Yeah, that's true. And I mean, from you guys reading it, it seems like you kind of understand it. Or I don't know if you guys had any like question around before I joined.
No, they're not like great proposals, yeah. Very interesting proposal.
So yeah, anybody in the call, if there's questions right now, don't hesitate.
Yeah, even maybe we can create like a little area somewhere on our Discord channel.
Yeah, I personally haven't read through the proposals yet, but could maybe give some feedback once I have. It's difficult to say now.
Yeah, same. Is the NFT kind of the same as outlined in the white paper or is there something a little bit different?
So it's similar, but kind of like an extended version that's more interoperable for, you know, entire ecosystem beyond just the app. Because like our one is, you know, basically for our network and this one is more, you know, they can, that same technology idea can be applied across other use cases as well.
Cool. I think also highlighting any chance that you get that it's open source. I think that's really big in the Cardano ecosystem as well.
Well, it's in the open source section. And I did say it was open source. One other thing it has is that the other one doesn't have, is explicitly talked about an AI that helps to see if you've done the, that you have a good measure of the scientific principle or social principle. And if this is working out, both online and in simulation.
Funny comment there by Vanessa in chat. You just, so many proposals in the open source challenge are not actually open source. But indeed great to see this one in.
Also, general proposition also to Rejuve, and in Ambassador's program itself, there are quite some folks who are already sincere in Catalyst and have hell of experience on this ecosystem. So for next rounds, if you need help on further proposals and Fund 11, 12, whatnot ongoing, you should definitely be very invited to reach out quite early already. When you're even already under ideation phase on your proposals. And you can definitely tap into some really good experience and expertise that will help you.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
I have a question. I was wondering, I'm working on a project that is about kind of big data and how AI can help big data in organizations. And I was just wondering, because there are kind of ethical concerns about, about what's available and what is used, what kinds of data are used across organizations. I was wondering if this, it's possible, because you were mentioning that this is a kind of framework, whether it could be adapted into other circumstances for people to manage their data footprints in organizations.
Debbie, do you want to take off?
So you're asking if it's possible to measure the data footprints of an organization with blockchain or?
No, I mean, because you were, your project has links to the kind of self-sovereign identity concept, whether, whether it could be adapted in other circumstances for people to kind of have greater control over how their data?
Absolutely, yes. Yes, there are so many instances today now that we have these large language models that are taking people's IP and data, mixing it together and coming out with a product, ensuring that those people never have any contribution to that product. And you don't even know what, what they contributed and even though it's using their stuff. So I think this is very relevant for today, that we have an AI that goes and finds out what your contribution is, what your proportionate contribution is, that's important. What has been going on in this AI and how did it take your stuff, right? And so that's just part of the model. And that proportionate contribution gets recorded in the blockchain so that any products that that was used to be made in, they, the people who contribute the data will get a proportionate share of the proceeds.
That sounds amazing. Thank you. Can you tell me about the different kinds of data that it would apply to?
Well, we have two basic types that we're applying it to now. One is the data from human body, that's healthcare data. And the other is IP, and that's the intellectual property. And that IP comes in two forms, like your voice, your image for the actors. I guess you could call that data, but it's also like your stories for writers, right? That's intellectual property, that's data. But there's also models, like your software, your models that you make. And those models, you know, are data makers, but they're also, should be attributed to the person who made them. Even, you know, open source or not, it's irrelevant. It's just that we're keeping track of who contributed to what. And it's not like you just write something, you give it to other people and then you never get a problem from it again. And this is basically made to disrupt how capitalism works, right? Capitalism works by the arbitrage of labor, that you can take someone's labor and sell it or buy and sell it without, you know, crediting them for it. And this prevents that. And so it should, you know, get rid of the vast inequalities that happened since the data economy started, where, you know, you just have one person at the top taking everything from everyone below. So this prevents that.
It's interesting in my, how I might address the free rider problem in open source contributions. I've been involved with open source for quite a few years now. And one of the major problems is a lot of the burden of open source software going on. A small minority of active maintainers and contributors. So a part of the problem with that is actually rewarding people who maintain intellectual property that is open to people so that there's some way for those people to survive and there's some incentive. And there's some incentive for people to participate, particularly marginalized people.
Right, right. Exactly.
All right. Um, looking at the clock, um, it was completely naive to think about a 10 to 15 minute slot, clearly. I think it would make sense to more or less, uh, go to wrap up now, uh, on this, uh, topic. Uh, any, any final contribution or questions or feel free to?
I just, uh, I just really liked the idea about maybe kind of collaborating with Nuneet and then approaching some of the big names like Big Pay and, uh, the Malu, Malulin pool to see if we could do some kind of, you know, combined marketing with them, because I do think that would reach a huge audience and, um, it might set a precedent for future rounds of, uh, the catalyst program where uh, both our projects and additional Singularity net spinoffs might also want to use that mechanic again to advertise during these periods.
Yeah, absolutely. Lots of synergy, uh, to be explored. Kran putting, uh, in chat, putting, uh, things into action straight away. Good stuff. Uh, yeah, thanks everybody for, uh, for the reception and the sharing insights and ideation here. Yeah, simply looking at the clock, I, I do think we need to move on to the next agenda item, otherwise, uh, we'll run into the two hour plus, uh, duration for the, for the call. Um, so yeah, thanks a lot to the whole Rejuve, uh, team all that are here, uh, for being here and presenting and answering questions. Appreciate it a lot.
Yeah, thanks for having us crash the meeting again.
All right, then, uh, that would bring us to the, um, updates on the work groups. And I guess a short, um, reminder to, to keep it a little bit concise if possible, um, just to make sure we don't run too much into the, um, to the process guild meeting, which is right after this one. Um, smooth segue there. Um, Tava, would you be able to, uh, give a little update on what's going on on the process guild?
Yeah, sure. Um, last week we were on summer vacation and it's every now and then happens throughout the summertime. But today it will happen and as always, we have some agenda items already prepared that we need to do now. And we have time to jump into one of these. Um, so looking forward to, to take the most pressing topics on next process record after this.
Thanks a lot. Um, then, uh, the archival work group. Um, Vanessa, I think you requested for a little, uh, screen share, right?
Yeah, if that's all right with everybody, I shouldn't take long. I mean, first of all, we just want to say that we've had a little break and our next meeting is on Wednesday, the 26th, that everybody is welcome to. And in that little break, we've been working on guidance notes for meeting summaries, which are going to be coming soon. Like I mentioned last week, we've realized that we probably need to be a little bit more definite over what is needed for a good archival record of a meeting. So we, we've tried to produce some guidance notes and we've tried to give lots of options and lots of leeway for individual approaches, which is important. But now we've got something that we want to ask your help with as ambassadors. So I'm just gonna screen share. The archives needs your input, basically. And that's a link to where you'll find the archives. So yeah, the archives need some ambassador help. A key task for any archive is catalog, cataloging and organizing its material. That gives us control over it and helps us know what we've actually got. Traditionally, it's an archivist that does this and that can be a bit top down and kind of a little bit looking in from the outside. But in a community archives like ours, the whole community should have a say in that process of cataloging and organizing. And also of course, because it's SNET, we want to explore using LLMs for some of these archival tasks. And to make that work, we ideally need a ton of community input in the first steps. Now, one of those first steps that we want to look at is developing a tag taxonomy for our material. Um, we're not necessarily asking ambassadors to kind of jump in and do that yourselves. We want your help to get more people involved. Cause we think it's the sort of clear cut task that could actually offer a way in for new people. So we're thinking of, you know, the people lurking in Discord who might have a spare 15 minutes to help on something. Or the followers we've got on Twitter and Insta who might be looking for a really neat little gateway task that they can get involved in, or just everyone really. And tag taxonomies are super interesting. You can tag by anything. Who was present at a meeting, topics that were raised, even the emotions that were raised by a meeting. Emotional tagging is a little obsession of mine and I find it really interesting. So, but, um, yeah, it's, we've got a doc there, which I'll post in the chat in a second and you can add your name to it. If you, as an ambassador, would be interested in getting involved, not necessarily to do the work yourself, but to help us reach out to people and get them involved. Cause, you know, cause it's about deciding how we structure our own history, our collective memory and deciding what our archive means. So that's why it's important. Thanks a lot for the time.
And thank you. Ah, there the ducks appear in the, in the chat already. Good stuff. I do want to dive deeper, but, uh, I guess it could be best to try and keep on going with the, with the actual agenda items. Uh, thanks a lot Vanessa. Um, yeah, so next week, um, Wednesday, the 13th, uh, UTC. Um, that's the call for the archival group. Um, that alternates bi-weekly with the, uh, D work, BBL work group. And that brings us back to Tavo. What's going on there?
Yes, this group goes not stay to so much homework. So the meetings are packed with a lot of new decisions and informations and reviews. Last time we took all the draft and with lessons for the D work PBL, we reviewed them, like disseminated them. And, uh, before next time, we actually, uh, for, for the next week, and we switched positions with our hybrid work group. So from ongoing, it's just going as normal. But the next week we will then have a setup, uh, session to, to set up a local Andamiya instance, which is the website where we publish the learning material. So everybody who wants to hands-on, uh, with the GitHub or GitLab experience to to create their own instance, to have their own learning materials published on website with the Cardano wallet and all the, all the neat features that comes along with this learning platform. And you're welcome to join and most of the session will be recorded. So if you're not able to join, uh, the content will be out there to us synchronized to follow up and learn up to speed how to do this.
Awesome. Um, there's some overlap there with, um, um, with the education, uh, guild. We were yesterday, um, also figuring out, uh, modules and stuff. Um, let's park that for now, I guess. Well, then you're still on, uh, Tava, I guess, with the, the next one on there.
Process modeling work group. And in this one, we are right now not technically creating a process mode because we took ourselves a challenge to establish a workflow to create workgroups. And the discussions there instead went into a direction of creating like a one page or like a matrix table to differentiate the seed work group, workgroup space, a program, for example, at, uh, where you just put two specific actions and you get specific outputs. And it, it takes a while and this, this has been now two weeks, we have been updating that information matrix table. And this week we also will continue to do so. We have a some approach now to how we agree to per work, work group formation and how we evaluate that. But now we need to go into talking, how do we allocate resources in these different workgroups? What do they have to have a strategy and how they describe that? What measures should workgroups use if at all? How they plan their roadmap and what are team requirements in, in these workgroups? So there is plenty of discussions to be had. And you're welcome to join and all the ambassadors already are leading workgroups. Your insight will be highly valuable.
Thanks a lot. Uh, then swiftly moving along to, um, incubation workshop and the strategic sessions on Wednesdays. Uh, let's see.
I could go into incubation.
Cool. Yep, please.
Uh, yeah, we talked a bit with Sukran. She had some questions around onboarding. And then we went into Esther's proposal on the Sway platform. It's a research project on organizational life logging and organizational memory. And I'll post a link to that right after this update. And then we went a bit into incubation, like future proposal, fund request ideation with everybody in the meeting. And then the hope with incubation moving forward is to change the dynamic a bit and host round two relaxed interview style meetings with people in the space from project leads, writers, innovators, community members. Could be SNET ecosystem, technology and et cetera. Um, our initial thought is a 30 to 45 minute, uh, Q and A. And leaving the last segment for any community questions and discussion. And then next Wednesday is going to be our first one with, uh, Grace Rockman. And yeah, we think it could tie into maybe some broadcasting ideation that we've had lately. Maybe we could stream to multiple platforms.
Very good. Looking forward to that one. Um, let's see, uh, next would be Strategy Guild. Do we have Tommy? Let's try we do.
Ah, give the second, he's just, he's just fine. It's Tommy.
Uh, Tommy, we were just about to, uh, touch on the, uh, Strategy Guild. So you rejoined perfectly.
Okay. Yeah, I got, uh, we're traveling, uh, Kevin's heading back to Florida, so running to the airport, but, uh, Strategy took a, a break, uh, for the long 4th of July and to recoup after all the budget talks. Uh, I'd like to pivot into two main topics. Uh, as the governance document is asynchronously being worked on, uh, I'd like, uh, in Strategy to start, um, ideating on what we're going to call ambassadors, and the rules of ambassadorship, so to speak, uh, so we can, uh, have a definition that everybody understands and can, uh, work with. And then two, uh, pivoting and going directly into, uh, a, uh, round or leadership, uh, type of ambassador position. That's what's coming up on the agenda. And, um, perhaps we will have time after incubation to have our workshop tomorrow, first one. Uh, if not, we'll just go fully with the mission. Thank you.
Audio was a little bit cutting there for me. Um, I think it's just as you mentioned, uh, during travels. Um, let's see then, uh, next would be the Treasury Guild.
While other workgroups and guilds are getting tired of, um, rewards, uh, distribution discussions, we continue with the financial, like discussing about financial activities around ambassador roles. So if you have any questions regarding your rules or budget items, and this is a great place to bring them. We can help to clarify any of the issues and our resource allocations for your ideas.
Thanks a lot. No, that's concise. Um, then that would bring us to, um, I think for this week, we don't have, um, the onboarding, uh, work group.
Oh, Sukra asked me to fill in for her because she couldn't make it. So I can just give a really quick update. We had a meeting last week and quite a few interesting things came out. One thing we noticed is that there's been a lot of interest from new people in graphics. So maybe we need a graphics work group. So that's maybe in the, in the pipeline. And we also really supported the idea of trialing, moving this meeting back to Discord as a test. There's a few people who've been saying it. Um, we talked a bit about attracting new people and the need to coordinate with marketing and social media workgroups. So expect to hear from us if you're from there. And, um, we also looked at some of the blockers with the process of like onboarding a new ambassador. We came up with a couple of suggestions, including inviting potential new ambassadors to attend all the meetings and give some feedback. Cause we'd all found that that's how we began to feel part of it all is by going to everything. So it's, it's something that we might be thinking about. And then the next meeting for the onboarding group is Thursday, the 27th. So we'd love to see you there if you've got ideas.
Awesome. And thanks for covering for Sugar and Spice, who's doing a lot of, um, great work. She also, um, took up the translation work group, which doesn't have a meeting. Um, if you're interested on the translation, that, that reminds me, um, right now we do have a two week, uh, review period uh, for translations before they get rewarded as a form of quality control. So readers can comment on the forum if there's something wrong with the translation. Uh, but this does stall the, uh, rewards for, um, experienced translators as well. So, um, in the uh, Discord channel on the translation work group, uh, there's space for a bit of discussion about that. I don't know how to deal with that. I personally feel we should simply get rid of the two week, uh, delay for the people that have already, um, yeah, successfully translated before without issues. Just wanted to put that out there. And then next on the list would be the AI sandbox. Fly. Are you around? Looks like, maybe not. It's just that.
Yeah, I think he had to go off.
Oh, fair.
Um, I wasn't there last week. Was anybody there last week?
We did mention this week that last two times there has been, um, very small participation. And so, but, um, but I'm not quite sure, yeah, how, how, how we will pivot to that.
Well, also earlier today, we did discuss, um, in regards to AI sandbox, that we should or could potentially be experimenting a bit with, um, large language models and the, the solutions we have right now uh, in the archive work group. But also I believe Fly was saying that would be something for maybe in a week or two, three. So I guess, uh, stay tuned on the Discord channel for updates on that. Um, yeah, for, for the plan for the coming session on, uh, Thursday. Uh, then on to the next one would be the writer's work group. Uh, Konichi, could you give us a short update on what's going on?
Um, yes. Uh, so, um, we didn't have a meeting last week. Uh, I was stuck in traffic without my laptop. Um, but we managed to, um, um, write a few articles, uh, two went out actually, um, uh, going over our town hall, I think that was town hall 51. Uh, there was quite, um, a lot of information in the, um, the session with, um, John. So, uh, decided to make that, um, an article and I went out, uh, about approximately a week ago. And, um, also, uh, we wrote an article on, uh, the token generation event, uh, for Sophia, uh, the soft token. Yeah. So, and, uh, we have a couple more coming out, uh, this week, hopefully tomorrow. Yeah.
Awesome. So keep an eye on the, on. Awesome. So keep an eye on the on the Medium page. I personally don't have the link handy right now and also screen sharing. So if somebody could put Medium in the chat, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll drop it in chat now.
Cool. Thanks a lot. Then almost getting there. Next on the list would be the Video Workgroup. I don't think I see Ro. I do not. Did anybody, I'm not even sure if that meeting took place, to be honest, last week. Was anybody there? Just a quick check. And if not, I think we should simply move on to the next. Thanks, Konichi, for putting the Medium link in chat. Do throw a follow there, please. Then last but not least on the list would be the Education Guild. The Fries, can you give us a little overview?
Absolutely. And hello all. Yes, we actually had our education workgroup yesterday. I was attended by Peter, myself and Synchonex Alex there. Very educational and conversation-filled meeting. We touched on a lot of topics and I'm driving, so I'm not gonna be able to look at my notes. But we kind of talked a little bit about what the Education Guild has been doing for the previous months. Where I was out, Alex stepped over that time period and built out this fantastic educational module on SingularityNet. Built into it, he recorded a credible video, which he put into this education module, explaining some information about SingularityNet. And it followed up with a multiple choice question and answer, a little quiz he had put together using Google APIs. That kind of rounded out the end of this education model. We discussed how this could be utilized to further the Education Guild goals. Okay, the conversation then continued on into how we could utilize this. For SingularityNet purposes, just a quick educational content about the various ecosystem projects. Or whether we wanted to go further and try and get the attention of, you know, various institutions, educational institutions. And we even discussed how to get the attention of places like the Department of Education here in the United States corresponding entities in various countries, how largely we wanted to go. And it was in that conversation and people who have attended various Education Guild meetings previous know that I had been suggesting a deep funding project to try and further the goals of what we have discussed in the Education Guild, but taking it further on a very specific tangent. So it was kind of determined that we need to separate some of the we're discussing into private meetings outside the ambassador group.
At the end there, the audio got really scrambled.
Modules using the format or similar format, Alex, has been pink. You know, but not mention you'd be interested in working on projects. Anybody else that would be interested in it, my email is theprizeby@gmail.com. You shoot me an email and we're going to be setting up a group to discuss all that outside Ambassador Guild hours. Again, sorry, I'm not looking at my notes, but that was.
Thanks a lot for that. Audio did get scrambled here and there, I imagine, because of driving. But also, as noted in the chat in the meeting summary, there's a quite thorough summary of yesterday's meeting as well. All right, that's, actually, we got through the workgroup updates by now. There's a link to the public calendar, which you can add to your Gmail account so that you never have to miss one of these meetings. Try and get a little bit quick to the wrap-up of this meeting, looking at the clock. We're one minute over time right now. But there's a couple of short mentions. And first, I would like to give room to Slade. Are you in the room? You are, awesome, for a new workgroup suggestion.
Hello, everyone. So I wanted to propose a new guild, a gamers guild in the SingularityNet Ambassador Program. And yeah, the main purpose of this guild, I'll just post the link for the doc, the proposal. Give me a second. Okay, so I have given the link to the proposal in the chat. And the main purpose of this proposal, this guild basically is to collaborate with other gaming communities and to incentivize gaming within SingularityNet with AGIX tokens. And the, the goals we have for this guild is to hold tournaments in the SingularityNet Ambassador Programs in which different participants will participate in these tournaments. And those who are interested in gaming and then some of them will be rewarded, the top ten or the top three. And similarly, about the collaboration, the collaboration will be taking place with different gaming communities in different sort of ways, like through beta testing, gaming applications and other stuff like that. Right now, we are, we have Marson. Do we have him? Yeah. We have. Yeah, so we have Marson. He is the, he's from AdaQuest and we are collaborating together with this workgroup. And yeah, it would be great if he can give an insight of what we are collaborating about.
Awesome.
What's your mind to, Marson, what's your mind to introduce quickly AdaQuest? Because I think nobody, I don't know, maybe people here hear it already about it because we have quite hardcore, kind of, community, actually, for those who didn't.
I don't know if my connection is rugged or your Felix, don't know. But it seems to be not the best now. However, yeah. We are already at, I guess, since Fund Five on Project Catalyst with AdaQuest and still building an RPG project with three different target groups. So we decided super early to be as much as possible ready for any kind of different gamer types. And we have also super early with PlayerMint and Project Catalyst the idea of building a gamers guild where synergies could be used for any kind of project. So like SingularityNet, like everyone who is ready to collaborate. Because there are so many use cases for gamefi and not only gamefi, but also gamification inside Debs, inside the Cardano ecosystem. Like Slade mentioned it, we have a lot of possibilities to reward users, to reward testers. Because everyone knows that the biggest pain for software developers, and it does matter if you are a game developer or if you develop a huge ecosystem. Testing is a big issue to find people that are properly testing and doing this with passion and delivering reports. It's not so easy. Finding people who engage with the community, who know how a Discord server works, who know how to speak to communities with different languages and so on. This is so hard for especially startups to get a lot of people on their Discord server and so on. So this would be all the gamers guild is all about connecting people from different software development, yeah, ecosystems. Or even, yeah, projects that had nothing to do in the first step with gaming, but can use us to just, you know, multiply their user base. So that's the idea behind this. And since we like also to support and onboard people, Felix Weber also decided to bring the guys from, like Slade and Malik from Pakistan, who are the proposers for this Project Catalyst proposal. Especially, we are focusing, of course, on students, on computer science students worldwide. So not only on one region, but all students worldwide are welcome to join the gamers guild to be a part of this and, yeah, to help to grow the Cardano software developer system, ecosystem.
So, yeah, that's pretty much it. And yeah, we are going to be collaborating with AdaQuest at first and probably we're gonna be having bounties for beta testers. And as well as we're gonna be incentivizing through gaming, the NFTs, which are gonna be rewarded through AdaQuest. And also combining them with AGIX tokens at the same time. And all the other priorities and information is written in the doc and in the proposal. And yeah, if you guys have any questions, go for it.
I'd like just to add, SuperSfas, it's for the beginning, it's just AdaQuest because we are so well-connected to other games inside the Cardano ecosystem. So it will be not only limited to AdaQuest. We will talk also with Tiago from Cardano Warriors already. And there are, of course, the possibility to do it with Conicopia and so on. So it will be a lot of talk, a lot of cooperation talk. But it will be not only limited, we're just starting and is doing this for more than two years now. Try to connect people inside the gaming Cardano ecosystem.
Also, love to mention a thing because it follows also a little bit the trend of what's introduced already by Rechuf. And when I came and said, hey, Mike Black and Rechuf, and said, hey, do you like to kind of, could we host some bounties on the SingularityNet Ambassador's Bounty Board? And bringing their own tokens as well. And here, it's a little bit the same approach, so to say, Singularity Ambassador's program, which has a quite effective bounty board in place with treasury system, is actually able to facilitate, should have of good stuff there. To say, hey, we can incentivize people who have the structure in place to engage people on specific projects. And by this also can shuttle off different and diverse activities and tokens than through the Ambassador's program, actually. But that's quite interesting because I think like this, we can also build some sort of sustainability together. They say, ah, cool. And this comes not from one single source, but by, yeah, bunch of these engagements.
I had tons of synergies to explore. And just a shout out in the chat is also the link to the Catalyst proposal. Do check that out. Yeah, looking at the clock, I think we should start to rush and it's time for, it's been a while, but for a proper apology again to Tav for running into the Process Guild slot for ten minutes already. I do want to put a quick reminder to the meeting summaries channel on Discord. But for everybody attending, because you can find meeting summaries in there, but also for the people hosting meetings. To actively put the summaries in there and include decision-making in that as well. And then a quick shout out for the Sophia First Token Generation Event that's ongoing. I imagine those interested would know where to find more information. And earlier today was an idea to have a meet and greet session during Ray Evo in Denver. That's not fully flashed out yet, but there's quite some SingularityNet team presence there. And we're aiming to, well, basically keep a slot clean in all of the schedules if we're having a meet and greet session. So yeah, I think I'll basically post it on the Ambassador General channel. And yeah, anybody interested in ideating on how to make that happen would be very welcome to chime in. And then the last one, I see I put the deep funding town hall there, but it's actually a community governance session this week. At Thursday at nineteen UTC. So if you're interested in community governance, yeah, do hop onto that one. And with that, I think we got to the end of this meeting. I do want to put a quick check if anybody has something to add for now or any final remarks or questions. And if not, that will wrap this pretty packed session. Thanks, everybody, for joining. And basically, in a minute or two, for those interested, the Process Guild meeting starts. Zoom link is in the Discord channel.
All right. Don't write that, then we close Discord.
Perfect. All right. Thanks, everybody, for joining and hope to see you on the next one.